It's 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order for starting business, public comment. If you have anything you'd like to say, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Item number three, parking ordinance, public hearing. So I open up the public hearing?
So you may recall, it was at the last meeting that we presented and grabbed parking ordinance to update the existing parking ordinances. So with some very minor, we'll call them dramatic changes, the policy that you have tonight is the same as the one in the board review two weeks ago. I will say that my office received no calls or comments from anyone regarding it, and I think that the same is true for the other department heads, so.
And just for clarification, Appendix A emergency license, we do not have any, so that's why I'm here. Anything from the board members? Anything from the public? No? This is the shortest public hearing. All right, I'll close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure? Would you like to put this?
I've read through it in detail. I have no problems.
That's right.
Exactly. At the time of the administration, it said.
What question is remaining in terms of effective date? What are you going to make it about?
I'm sorry, what?
Effective date. When is it effective?
August 1st.
Eight one?
That would be the stage.
Eight one twenty nineteen.
Well, you should be happy about it. You're doing something on your group.
All right, move to proof the proposed parking ordinance as presented with the effective date of August 1st, 2019. Does that have a second argument? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion passes? Item number four, Matt Lode, ORYA.
Hello. ORYA is interested in making some improvements to the Massway field or town field. We are interested in expanding its use to include softball. Softball's because every fields are slightly different from Little League or Cow Ripken based field because they just had their infield and grass on the infield. So we would like to utilize the quote from hillside landscaping to convert that to a softball specific field, which for us will only expand the opportunities for use. T-ball that primarily uses that field through our programming will still be able to use the field as normal, but we would like to host our hopeful softball teams there in future.
Any questions? Chief?
My concern is parking.
Sure.
Because we already have an issue with parking now. We're going to increase the use, so what are your plans to?
There wouldn't be any increased use from a day-to-day perspective. Only one team can use it at a time. So the day-to-day would be about the same.
Tournaments?
Let's say, we wouldn't have any media plans. We're hoping for one team, potentially two in the spring, and that's still a hopeful at this point. So let's say that it was used three or four days a week, maybe it would be used four or five days a week in the future.
We just got to make sure as far as the days that the transfer station is open, that people staying out of the travel.
And I'm open to trying to find new ways to avoid those parking issues, potentially allowing us to even utilize our little line sprayer and maybe putting diagonal lines or however the best way to make happen what you want.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How many parking spaces are on this side?
Well, they're not laid out. They're not marked out, so it depends. If it's Subaru or something like that, they can pull in diagonally, it's not a problem, but when they start bringing in their F-250s, their 350s, their extended cab pickups, things like that, they're well off into the pavement, to the point where if it's on a day that the transfer station is open, you can't get too much traffic down there. So somebody's got to stop and wait till somebody else goes down. We've been trying to work with it. I could all take a picture, send it, and then they'll put an email out. Matt will put an email out to everybody. It'll be okay the next time, and then the time after that, it's straight back to being an issue again.
We can help improve with signage, however you want.
Yeah, you need some signs there, and people forget that they can park around the, on the tennis court side with a memorial that they can pull in there. They're well off of 155. There's room for a lot of cars there. I just think everybody wants to get as close as they can, and that jams it right up.
Mr. Brown?
I just wonder if you've discussed this with the recreation commission?
Larry has encouraged us to make improvements for sure. The softball verse redoing it as is hasn't been discussed. Want to make sure that it was something that was possible. So he had asked for us to get the quote and have it be redone this year, and then that got us thinking, if we're going to redo it, let's expand the use opportunity.
We have discussed this with Matt earlier this year. Because of the progress and the condition of that field, which has been very poor, it hasn't been maintained over the years as was required by the MOU. And we got into the discussion about that, but this is the first I've heard of this. It has not come to the recreation commission yet. So if we're going to make a major change in this field and how it's used, I think it ought to come to the recreation commission so we can make a recommendation at the select board before we move forward. And I certainly encourage any kind of improvement to that, but we'd like to have some input on that also.
That's good. Can I ask a question in terms of cost? Is this something that ORYA is picking up?
Yes, that's the plan. Once we would get the okay to, you know, for the blessing, we would then either look into utilizing current fundraising dollars that the baseball program has to spend, or go out and start a campaign.
And which one are you looking at? There's two options here.
Most likely, the lower dollar amount, which is the chlorogen field mix, a higher clay, lower grade mix. Gary Cowan, who offered the quote, from a use perspective, doesn't see a massive difference for the level that we would be offering. We're a local, in-town based program, and either of those would be great in his opinion.
Any comment? I'm enthusiastic about it, but again, I do want to have it go through the recreation committee for their input with respect to parking and other issues associated with. Is there any possibility that you could talk to Massway School to park over there?
Absolutely.
To take the burden off of that transfer station, parking and driving. I think that would reduce a lot of issues. And it's a very short walk from the park.
Yeah, we work with them for our basketball program all the time, so.
I'd like to, as the chairman, that maybe at this point is that we don't move on this tonight, allow the recreation commission to have an opportunity to discuss it. So I would suggest you work with Larry directly and come back to us.
No problem at all.
Mr. Brown, would you?
Yeah, that's fine. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Item number five, Laura Harts.
Taking the time. So my name's Laura Harts. I'm an attorney with Ora Reno and Concord. I'm here on behalf of Bedrock Gardens, and I have a request to reconsider. So we're hoping that you will reconsider the request we had made for an interim schedule for Bedrock Gardens to operate. And the reason why we're asking to reconsider is really a factual reason. So as you probably know, after the planning board approved the plan with 18 conditions, that was on February 21st, several neighbors appealed the plan, and under RSA 67715, that stayed all proceedings. Effectively was a stop on everything, including the conditions of approval. So the appeal was only wrapped up July 17th. I believe I included a copy of the order and the materials by Judge Howard, and with the conclusion of the appeal, the time clock starts again. So as of July 17th, there should be another 78 days for Bedrock Gardens to especially complete the landscape plans, which was the first deadline originally set for June 1st. It's a little bit of complicated math, but that's just the effect of the RSA 67715 statute. And then I can understand why the select board would want to be sort of considerate of the precedent that this might set. In effect, you would be allowing Bedrock Gardens to proceed on an interim basis, even though they have an approved site plan and they need to work towards filling those conditions on the approved site plan. Bedrock Gardens knows this and is working to make those conditions complete. So even today, Bob applied for, I think, four building permits for the properties, or the property, two of which were required condition of the plan. The landscape plans ordinarily are due October 3rd because of that math, but Bedrock Gardens is going to complete them by August 5th and submit them to the planning board then. That's two months in advance, month and a half in advance. And then probably the most important part to think about in terms of precedent is that when the other agritourism operations come in, or came into the planning board for site plan review, no agritourism operation was required to be closed until the conditions of their plan were met. And that is the effect of not approving interim schedule. It effectively closes Bedrock Gardens until all of the conditions of the plan are met. So I guess in conclusion, really what Bedrock Gardens is asking for is a limited schedule. It's much less than what the planning board approved for the conditions, and it's really only for the next three months until the conclusion of their season so that they can get that fence built, they can get all the landscape plans in, and they can get that new parking area complete. So I'd be happy to take any questions you can have.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Well, yeah, I always get confused when we start talking about, because, you know, for instance, the landscape plan. I sat in a meeting months and months and months ago where it was made very clear we needed a landscape. How long can it take to make a landscape plan? I mean, I understand they want to get things going again, but this been dragging on for a long time, and I really feel as though a lot could have been done, finished.
Sure. Yeah, and actually, Bedrock Gardens feels the same. They would rather be done with this process, I can assure you. But under RSA 67715, they had to stop. It doesn't make sense for them to continue with the conditions of a plan that could be ultimately turned over at the Supreme Court. I mean, that was the function of this day, is to stop all business.
Any other questions?
Can I ask Ms. Rossi, come up? I want to hear from the board.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I went through her letter, and I did a little write-up, just because it's easier to read what I wrote. So to address number one in her letter, "The planning board approval was February 21st, 2019. Yes, the timing is unfortunate, but it's the law. It's my understanding that Bedrock Gardens opens in April. I made the applicants aware of the appeal process in November of 2018, making this aware that this could happen. Jill Noonie, Bob Mungert, and John Forte were present, as well as Steve Bullock, the lead public works manager. I advise them to confirm my information with their attorney." Number two, "Site plan approval is required for any other use other than a single-family home and a dooflex. Therefore, it is not unreasonable nor against state law. They are allowed to operate after planning board approval, provided that all of the conditions of approval are met, just like all other applications. If we're against state law, perhaps Judge Howard would have changed his approval to reflect that. He upheld the planning board decision and did not modify it at all or provide comment." So she said in her letter that it was a violation of state law to have agritourism events to be held, you know, put unrealistic conditions against agritourism. Judge Howard didn't speak against that, which would lead me to think that he didn't have any issues with the planning board's condition of approval. Number three, "I believe it could set a precedent. If Bedrock Gardens, if this is allowed for Bedrock Gardens, which means if you guys allow them an interim schedule, why would others not seek the same relief? This application was before the planning board for over 18 months. Landscaping buffer plan is a critical part of Bedrock Gardens, as it will provide protection for the abutters as well as address or should address any concerns and issues that they have had. If you allow Bedrock Gardens to open without addressing these issues, then the abutters' issues will be overlooked and where is the balance in the planning board approval process?" "The construction of the new parking lot is paramount for the expanded operations of Bedrock Gardens, as there were multiple issues in the past with cars blocking high road, et cetera. And I understand that they're asking for, during the weekdays, to use the existing parking lot, but on the weekends, they're going to shuttle them in for Massway School. So who knows how many people are going to be there there?" And over the course of several, so there's been parking issues over the course of several years. "The planning board's site review application was not just to construct a new parking lot, it was to review the entire use of Bedrock Gardens, as it not had any prior review. The planning board reviewed another application for agriculture and agritourism just recently at the last planning board meeting. That required site plan approval and conditions that had to be met before they could operate. They complied, and they didn't seek approval from this board to override the planning board decision. And they had an event for 300 people planned the following weekend, and they complied right away and were allowed to operate. And they got a letter ahead of time saying that if you don't comply, you can't operate." "As far as outstanding conditions of approval, the landscaping plan is critical to the approval and is outlining the buffers for the abutters, as I stated before. This was requested multiple times by different planning board members over the course of the 18-month planning board approval process. Never have received it, and they didn't receive it prior to the condition of approval. And the planning board asked to have it submitted by June 1st. And I understand that the timing is dictated by state statute relative to the appeal, but it does prevent them submitting it. And their landscaping, that's their job. Jill's a landscape specialist. I mean, she does beautiful work. And then once they do submit it, a minimum of one public hearing will be held by the planning board reviewing." And I also reached out to our attorney today to clarify the, in Ms. Harts' letter, that violating the state statute, and she said, "Bedrock Gardens is a conflating permitted use and site plan approval." Yes, their use is permitted, but that does not mean it's exempt from site plan approval, or that it's entitled to operate without meeting the conditions of site plan approval. While they have been operating illegally using the small parking lot for many years, that confers no right to them to continue to operate using only a small parking lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just want to add some factual clarification. Yeah, so let me just back here to my notes, make sure I follow them completely. So I guess the most important part is a timeline issue. So the 18 months that Bedrock Gardens was before the planning board, as selectman of course knows really well, the landscape plans were in flux, and the final condition of approval, the precedent condition, the one precedent condition, is the submission of three landscape plans for three different areas on the Bedrock Gardens property. And the terms of the landscape plans is actually quite complex. They had submitted some drafts, some sketch drafts, to the planning board of potential landscape plans with drawings of plants, and definitely nowhere near as technical as they needed to be for the planning board's approval. But the feedback for those plans was only given February 21st, when the conditions of approval were set, when the site plan was set. So that's one thing. It's a little bit inaccurate to say that they knew from the beginning that they had to have exactly the three landscape plans and the buffer. That's just a hard fact. And then the other thing is that, I just want to clarify, when I say it's against state law to unreasonably limit an agritourism use, that's under RSA 672, Section 1, Subcolon 3B, which says, as selectman of course knows again in the planning board proceeding, we talked about it a lot, it says towns and municipalities can't unreasonably restrict agritourism. It's a permitted use in all districts. And while it's true that of course the planning board and the select board have authority to govern non-residential uses on property, agritourism is one of those special things, and Bedrock Gardens is one of those agritourism uses, so it gets that special category to say that it can't be unreasonably limited. And then finally, the permitted activities at Bedrock Gardens, as approved by the zoning board, say that the educational activities, visits by the public, and tours are lawful uses. So those are allowed by right. The part where it conflicts with state law and with the New Hampshire constitution is if a town overly restricts a business owner's ability to operate. And that's what we think is happening here, if Bedrock Gardens isn't able to be open on an interim schedule. I totally believe that there was an agritourism operation last week that had to have site plan approval. That makes sense, before they were allowed to operate. And I was trying to prove to myself that Bedrock Gardens is receiving equal treatment. So I went back through the planning board minutes and pulled the planning board meeting minutes from the approval of DeMaris Hill Farm and from Board of Selectmen discussion in October, talking about what it would require for a site plan approval for an agritourism operation that was brought in. And nowhere in the minutes does it say that the operation gets shut down before they meet the new conditions of approval. So that's just what we ask for, is equal treatment, like any other agritourism operation. I know you guys are sick of this process, and we are too, so.
Do you have the minutes?
I do, yes. And I'm happy to provide them, yeah.
There were no conditions of approval?
I believe that there were. So this is, let's see. So this is, I'm looking at October 11, 2018, these are planning board meeting minutes, where the planning board describes, Karen Rossi, describes how new farms are in town. They have not had site plan review. These need to be brought in for planning board review.
And they're coming in?
Excellent. Nowhere in the minutes does it say they're closed down until site plan review is completed.
They're not construct, the issue here is completely different than everybody else. They're constructing a large parking lot to satisfy problems.
Yes.
Nobody else has the problems. They're just coming in as routine because we're bringing all, there's no issues with the other parcels. That's the difference here.
Yeah, and I guess that's something that the select board will have to decide. I also have this, this is planning board meeting minutes from September 13, 2018. This is the review of DeMaris Hill Farm, and it says, "John of course made a motion to approve the application with the condition that the final plan gets submitted in file."
Yeah, it was submitted the next day.
Show and location for no toilets, hot air, a total number of parking spaces.
Submitted the next day.
So I guess you have it up to your discretion about whether you would like to set a precedent where you shut down an existing business, or whether you'd like to do as you have in other cases, and that's allow an interim schedule.
We haven't allowed interim schedules. You guys are the only ones who, with the exception of Forestland Camera, which is not allowed to use their new building until they meet all the conditions of site plan approval. So this is something different.
Has any other planning board applicant ever come to the select board?
Never. Not in my 17 and a half years working for the town, no.
Yeah, Bedrock Gardens is a unique case, and they absolutely want to be done with this process, and I'm sure you guys do as well. Their hope is just to get through to the end of the year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Any comments from, hey, let me make a comment. Since I've been as a select board person and a representative, the select ones are a board to the planning board itself. I have been listening for a long time, and there's, we've been asking for things for a long time to get done. A lot of those things could have been done. I'm not so sure you couldn't have done. The boundary between Mr. Brownling and the, you know, Bedrock Gardens could have been started and didn't have to wait independently at this point. So I'm kind of a little bit disagreement at this point. And we went through a lengthy process. A part of it is to make harmony between Bedrock Gardens and the neighboring properties at this time. And I don't tend to try to overrule or take authority over existing processes. So I'm inclined to deny at this point because the planning board has done their job, and they've done it adequately, and Mrs. Rossi's been on this from day one, and she's followed through adequately at this point. So I don't see the need to, you know, go ahead and permit.
Sis, Donald?
I have a question, a procedural question. I'm curious, because we were led to believe that the planning board wouldn't consider a landscape plan while the lawsuit was in play. So we didn't even think they would meet with us. And then we, we didn't want to go ahead with any landscape plan, which we could have, because we didn't know if there were appeals to the Supreme Court, which would have taken a year. And who knows what that would have ended up determining. So we didn't want to do something we'd have to undo.
And I understand what Ms. Noonie is saying, but as Laura Harts may remember, I was emailing her several times back and forth, looking for the landscaping plan because the June 1st deadline was coming up. And I asked them for it, and I said, "No, if we continue, we have to repost it." And she said, "No, we want to wait." So I reminded them, asked for it, they didn't submit it.
And I have, Karen's totally right. And I have an email from Attorney Inspector Morgan, who's counsel to the select board, that says, Laura Harts is right.
Technically, she's counsel to the planning.
Oh, sorry. Technically, she's counsel to the planning board. Thank you, Ms. Glover. I have a copy of that email here, and in fact, Karen and I were just talking about how the plans were stayed as a condition of the appeal, really.
But you could submit it, you just chose not to.
Direct your comments to the board, not to each other, please.
But it's my understanding from talking to our attorney that they could submit it, they just chose not to. They didn't have to.
Could I read from Attorney Inspector Morgan's email? Sorry to go back and forth.
Yeah, read it. Absolutely.
Yeah, so this is an email from June 5, 2019, from Attorney Inspector Morgan to Karen and to me. "Hi Karen, in speaking with Lauren Bob some more, since the submission of the plan was a condition of approval, and since the approval is on hold, it seems that a submission of the plan should be on hold as well, because if the court overrules the approval, there's no need for the plan."
I agree. Yep, I'm sorry, I didn't recall it that way.
So let's just take it off the agenda, and if the court denies the appeal and affirms the planning board, we can get it back on the agenda. We'll worry about noticing them.
Can I make a comment?
Submission of the plan? Were those her words?
Submission of the plan.
So the plan could have been worked on, could have been near completion, and then July 1st, the appeal period ran out, or?
July 17.
July 17.
With all due respect, they're, you know, they're trying to make ends meet. And yeah, it is their business, and they do landscaping, and it's a lot of work to make a landscape plan. We tried to do some sketches, they weren't enough. Planning board asked for more. We put it on hold to put good resources to it.
Would you like to say that?
I believe you.
What's that?
I believe you. We don't need it. Thank you.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, thanks.
No more comments? Any more comments, Mr. Brown?
No, I was just going to, whether the board wants to ponder at all what this does mean for future applicants to the planning board. Because again, if Karen doesn't remember in, what is it, 17 years?
17 and a half.
And I don't recall it in seven and a half years, that any planning board applicant came to the select board to ask for this. So I think it does open the door to other planning board applicants coming to the select board. I don't want to use the words as a "in" run around the planning board, but while things are pending with the planning board.
What's the board's pleasure? I move to deny. So how about if I move the question and second it, and then we can vote? Yes. So I move to grant the reconsideration and approval of the limited schedule noted above in the request. Do I have a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number six. Julie's other candidates.
You may recall, at the last meeting, Mrs. Gleason came to comment to speak about fireworks at Pine Hill Village, and suggested to the board that the board not allow fireworks in the home parks, in the density. So I contacted the attorneys at NHMA, and in their opinion, the statute is absolute. In other words, the board can allow fireworks in town, or the board can not allow fireworks in town, but not pick and choose where we might want fireworks to be or not to be. Pine Hill Village, as you know, is private property. If any of the residents there are concerned, they certainly can speak with Gene Howe, the owner, and address their concerns that way. But the board can't pick and choose where we want fireworks to be. So it would be all or nothing.
So I assume right now it's all. We don't have anything.
Class C fireworks.
But is there no guidelines or regulations regarding how far from a building you have to be in order to?
That may be contained within the state statute, which are ordinance references. So in other words, if we allow class C fireworks... So, in other words, if we allow class C fireworks, which we do, class C fireworks have to be operated in accordance with state statute.
Good. Which?
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't have any direct knowledge of what happened or didn't happen.
So, I would ask, maybe the town minister had to write a letter to Ms. Linda Gleason, just explaining and CC that to the owner of the park as well.
Okay.
And then, basically, we follow through, and if the park owner wants to do something about it, that's her decision.
Yep.
Any comments? Quick, quick, quick. All right. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
The discussions. No discussions. Anybody say aye?
Aye. Motion passes. Does he have his pen?
Does it work, though? Nature is looking. I don't think it is. Sorry. No, it is. It's the twenty-eighth. I don't think it is. July is like sipping house. Be sure it is. Can you tweak? Number one. Tweak. Number six.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
You can.
Well, we would approve it.
I mean, you could make a statement for the record.
I will make a statement for the record. In the minutes of July fifteenth, item number, geez, item number six, in terms of the vote, it says, "Selectmen Brown and LeCours vote aye, Selectmen Bugby said votes nay." That was not the case. I voted aye as well, so.
Well, well.
I was meant to vote.
You meant to.
I was really saying, those in favor say aye, those in favor didn't say nay.
Then you forgot to say.
And I forgot to say yea, whatever, so.
Julie, over there. So, your aye was a nay, or your nay was an aye?
Don't confuse me now.
It was unanimous vote.
Yes, it was unanimous. It really doesn't change anything.
Unanimous vote. It does look fine.
Ooh, does this mean we get a raffle ticket for free? I think there was one included. No?
No.
Just relax, you're raffled. Can I ask a question? In terms of the Durham Dispatch, is this number less than last year? Do you note it up here?
Squeeze it in.
Durham Dispatch.
Yeah, the thing that she, Emma just said, signed. Says it's eighty-four, forty-five. I thought it was like... It's just a question.
Well, there's, I don't recall what's in the fiscal twenty budget, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, is this number that they're giving us more or less than what we have in there?
I think it's what we budgeted, but I can check that out.
Exactly, okay. Is it higher? Is that what you're telling me?
Oh.
Or you're just giving me a thumbs up, because it's all good?
No.
No, it was here, he could tell us, but.
Where is I? I don't know where it looks.
That's the unit dispatch.
Dispatch.
Thank you. What's that? Item number eight, Ms. Lynn is interested in this. Do you have anything? I've one thing. No? This is more a clarification from myself and the TCVC. Our charge says by August thirty-first. The board meetings that are closest to her are August twenty-sixth and September ninth. So, which one?
September ninth.
September ninth? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're here, more breathing space. Let's all know a bit more.
Well, we're working, just as an FYI, we're working on floor plans of the municipal building, and that's coming along, but we don't want to pass them by the town, I suspect, we think, there's going to be inward processing there, so we need some time to go back and forth. We have people working on different funding options that are available, so that's in the process, but the whole thing about going back and forth, if you want to find something that the staff aren't comfortable with, sound good? That's it.
We do appreciate the minutes.
The minutes?
TCVC.
Oh, yeah, I'm getting tired of doing the minutes.
You're doing a good job, keep it up.
This is like sixty, sixty meetings we've had, or something, I don't know.
Still a good job.
My writing skills are going downhill. Anything else?
Julie?
Julie?
Did Mr. Bullock leave?
Yes.
He will be on vacation from the fifth to the ninth, August fifth to August ninth.
Okay. And who's in charge, who is gone, is it?
I think it's probably Tag Team, between Peter and.
Just so we know who to contact.
Yeah.
Anything else? Move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Selectmen.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.